Hey, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Guelph City Council meeting of April the 1st, 2025. If you'll all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. We can do roll call, please?
Councilmember Kiriyako?
Here.
Councilmember Reyes Martin?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tempore Kazdin?
Here.
And Mayor Perotti?
I'm here. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I may for a second?
Yes, please.
I just wanted to acknowledge our newest deputy city clerk is running the meeting tonight, Nicholas Norman.
Yay, congratulations. We'll try not to give you a hard time tonight. Okay, so I will introduce our Spanish translator.
Buenas noches, tenemos interpretación disponible en español. Si alguien prefiere esta noche, aquí tengo auriculares. Good evening, we have interpretation into Spanish. If anybody prefers, I have headsets over here. Thank you, gracias.
Thank you. If we could have a report from closed session, Mr. Rosen?
Thank you, Mayor. So for the closed session item read into the record earlier this evening, there is no reportable action.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we'll have public forum. Anyone that wishes to speak to anything that's not on our agenda this evening and pertinent to this relative to our jurisdiction. Do we have any speakers?
Thank you, Mayor. I have one speaker slip for public forum, and if anyone on Zoom wishes to speak, please raise your hand and we will call upon you. Speaking first, David Rashford.
Good evening, members of the City Council, hardworking staff. I'm a recent graduate of the LEED-Golita program, and I learned a lot about our local community and the teams that do the great work in our town. And I was really pleased to learn that one of the goals of the City of Golita is to have zero homeless people on our streets. And I was happy to learn of the really great progress which we've made. But I've also learned that there are some inconsistencies and confusion, which I believe, if cleared up, could improve our situation with encampments. I'm here to urge you to rethink the approach to addressing homeless encampments by enforcing the legally enforceable camping ban and enforcing it consistently and uniformly within our community. We don't allow encampments in our public parks or along our sidewalks, but there are tiny pockets mostly along Caltrans and Union Pacific areas where hidden encampments are allowed to be established. This isn't about punishing people or criminalizing homelessness. It's about restoring safety, cutting costs, and protecting our community. First, crime. Encampments often become hotspots for illegal activity. Theft, drug use, and violence spill into our neighborhoods, threatening residences and businesses. Police data consistently shows higher call volumes near these sites. And enforcing the camping ban doesn't solve homelessness, but it disrupts the conditions that breed crime and make our streets safer. Second, cleanup costs. Every encampment we tolerate means taxpayer dollars spent on trash removal, biohazard disposal, and property damage repairs. These expenses pile up, and this was money that could fund shelters and other outreach instead. Enforcing the ban reduces this burden, freeing resources for real solutions. Finally, fires. Encampment fires pose a proven fire risk. Cooking fires and makeshift heaters spark blazes that endanger lives and strain our fire department. Since 2020, we've had over 55 fires that the Santa Barbara County Fire has coded directly homeless-related. Many of the years occur near eucalyptus trees, and as the recent devastating fires in Pacific Palisades and Altadena showed, those fires can turn catastrophic very quickly. Enforcement minimizes these preventable disasters. I know compassion matters, but compassion isn't letting people live in squalor surrounded by risks we can address. We've also got to consider compassion for our residents who are subject to petty theft, increased fire risk, and disturbing behavior on our streets. The camping ban is enforceable under Public Code 602, and courts have upheld similar measures. Pair it with expanded shelters and services, not as punishment, but as progress. I represent Creekside HOA. We're directly adjacent to the Union Pacific right-of-way at Patterson. We're a small community of 40 units, and we've spent over $500 per unit or $20,000 securing our property, and we just want a little more support.
You know, this isn't on our agenda for discussion, but we will be having, I'd like to let you know that we will be having a homelessness committee meeting on April the 3rd, which is, what is that, Thursday?
That Thursday.
Wednesday, Thursday.
Okay.
Here, City Hall at 3:30. Welcome to come.
Can I speak again if I sign up for that?
You just show up.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, and thank you for your attention. Appreciate all the work you guys do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And Mayor, I have one person wishing to speak on Zoom.
Okay.
Robert Zaidah, if you could please accept the prompts you're about to see on your screen and make sure you unmute yourself.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. It's me again as a 50-year resident of El Encanto Heights. Some things I'd like to bring to your attention. You have access to the dashboard saying how cleanups go around here, whether it's citizen-involved or group or whatever. And if you look around El Encanto Heights, there's quite a few along Kyrial, Glen Annie, and Cathedral Oaks. If you look in those areas now, the grass is a foot to two feet tall in some areas, and trash cannot be picked up out of there. So now you're going to come through with a lawnmower or weed whacker, and any trash that's in there is going to get shredded and into little micro pieces that are even harder to pick up. Please consider having a regular basis of cleanup or cutting down of these areas would be a great idea. Mayor, it goes back to your idea last year of having a safe walkway along Glen Annie. That safe walkway that was taken care of with the dead grass, and now that's gone and the green grass is growing up, there is no safe walkway along Glen Annie Road for your high school students walking from Cathedral Oaks to the Kyrial area. Also, along Kyrial, the Kenwood property, there's trees, there's no safe way to walk on either side of the freeway or on Kyrial through that area. And the Kenwood property has trees that are right up and into the bicycle lane there, and so it's hazardous to walk either way in the bicycle lane there. So if that could be cleaned up either by Kenwood or by the city, that would be great Also, my concern is a few years ago, maybe even a decade ago, there was a big push to get pompous grass eradicated in the area. And my concern now is the castor bean plant. It's an invasive species and is quite prevalent around schools and whatnot, and is very difficult to get rid of once it's grown and spreads its things. Sitting here on Zoom, and I don't know if it's just me, but my Zoom popped up in the middle of the pledge of allegiance, and it would be nice if Zoom could be activated a few moments before the pledge of allegiance so we can enjoy it at home also. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll be in touch.
Thank you so much.
Mayor, pardon your interruption. Can we call for recess so we could reset the Zoom stream? It seems to not be working at the moment.
Let's do a five-minute, hopefully, recess.
Okay, we're going to bring this meeting back to order. Thank you for your patience.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just an announcement for the public that our City of Galita meetings and agenda stream is down. We are still streaming on YouTube and Zoom, and public comment can still be given through Zoom. But the stream is available on YouTube, and the Zoom webinar is still going.
Okay. Okay, well, where we left off was public comment for a public forum, anything that's not on the agenda that pertains to this jurisdiction only. Is there any others? Might there be more speakers?
Thank you, Mayor. I have no one else wishing to speak at this time.
Okay, then I'm going to close public comment and move on to amendments or adjustments to the city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have any adjustments to the agenda tonight, but I do have one announcement.
Okay.
Coming up in one week, Galita Community State of the City, one week from today. We hope you join us on Tuesday, April 8th, at the Galita Community Center for the biggest event of the year. Come early at 4:30 and hear the Dos Pueblos High School Jazz Band playing at the gazebo. And then the doors actually open at 5 o'clock. And inside, there'll be city information tables, you can mingle, lighten freshments, and then the program starts at 6 o'clock. And of course, of course, the program is, the mayor will be delivering our State of the City for 2025. So I hope everyone can attend. It's going to be a great event.
You'll also be speaking on our financial update, right?
I will, a little bit on finances, yes.
Thank you. Okay, so that was the end of your reports? Okay, so we'll move on to consent calendar.
Item A1, approval of the city council meeting minutes of March 18th, 2025. Item A2, award of agreement for move management services for the Galita Valley Library ADA Safety and Building Improvements Project.
Thank you. Council wished to pull any item from consent. Not seeing any. Do we have any public speakers?
Thank you, Mayor. I have no one wishing to speak on this item.
Okay, then I'm looking for a motion to approve consent.
So moved?
All second.
Okay, if we can do a roll call.
Thank you, council members. As a courtesy reminder, please remember to lock in your votes. Councilmember Kiriyako?
Aye.
Councilmember Reyes Martin?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tempor Casden?
Aye. We can't, by the way, access it, or at least I can't.
Sorry about that.
Just so you know. But aye.
Okay, I'll say aye as well. So I think we all said aye.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, moving on to see, oh no, we have a presentation. Yes.
Item B1, Brian Highfield Associate Planner, 20 Years of Service Recognition Butterfly Plaque.
Highfield asked me to be brief, which is ironic, considering we're here to honor and acknowledge him for 20 years of lengthy service at the City of Galita. And however, in deference to him, I will just say only a few words and say that I've known Brian since, at least since his son Elliot, who's sitting here in the audience, and my daughter were both in diapers, which is not quite 20 years ago, but already 16 years ago, and seems, at least to me, several lifetimes. But I consider Brian to be a friend as well as a colleague. And I will also say that during the not-quite-eight years that I've been here, Brian has been a stalwart of the Planning and Environmental Review Department. He's a go-to person, friendly, approachable, highly competent, he knows his stuff. And as just one example, he managed the development and the implementation of the city's magnet permit tracking system software. And there is nothing that he has not seen or done as far as planning is concerned, and the city is really lucky to have him. So I'd like to congratulate him on 20 years of service.
When I heard that you were going to be celebrated for your 20 years of distinguished service, I was, oh no, does that mean Brian's leaving? No, Brian is not leaving. He's just receiving this butterfly for 20 years. And I thank you so much. I've gotten to know you over the years, and I really appreciate your hard work. So I have the honor and appreciation of Brian Highfield Associate Planner, 20 years of distinguished service, 2005 to 2025 from the City of Galita and the City Council. The council are going to want to get pictures, and then pictures of all of us. And then, of course, we want you to say a few words.
Of course.
You know the drill. Should we, I'll stand up and take picture, whoops.
Well, I too will be brief. I'm not usually sitting or standing here. I'm usually sitting over there. But yeah, 20 years has been, it's gone by really fast. Worked with a lot of different people, and I really just thank all my current and former colleagues for always sharing their knowledge with me. And can't do this job alone, so it takes a, it takes a village like that. So I really appreciate it. And also, of course, to council and all the boards and commissions that I've been in front of over the years. It's been great. So thanks again.
Thank you. Do we have any public speakers?
Thank you, Mayor. I have no one wishing, no one wishing to speak at this time. If anyone on Zoom wishes to speak, please raise your hand, and I will call upon you. And we have no one on Zoom wishing to speak.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you. Okay, moving on to next item.
Item C1, Measure A Five-Year Program of Projects for Fiscal Year 2025 to 2030.
We're just setting up the presentation right now. Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. I'm Nina Buena, your Public Works Director. And I'm going to introduce Teresa Lopes, our Senior Project Manager, who will be discussing Measure A Program of Projects. And I'll turn it over to Teresa.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Buena. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, and also of the public. So I'm here to talk about the Measure A Five-Year Program of Projects for Fiscal Years 2025, 2026 through 2029-30. So a brief overview of the program. Measure A is a voter-approved ordinance and investment plan, which was adopted in 2008. SB CAG allocates the Measure A transportation sales tax revenues according to the voter-approved ordinance and investment plan. And the established percentage splits in the ordinance is approximately 43.3% goes to the North County, 43.3% goes to the South County, and 13.4% to the U.S. 101 Project.
I just want to interrupt just for one second. I forgot to, I haven't done a public hearing for a while, forgot to open the public hearing. So I'm opening the public hearing. Continue, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So the Measure A program is estimated to bring in approximately 257 million over the next five years. Galita's estimated portion of the Measure A revenue is approximately 11 million over the next five years. And this is the same as was estimated last year. I also wanted to note that Galita is projected to spend approximately 60% of our Measure A revenues on alternative transportation improvements. The program requires a minimum of 10%. And the reason our percentage is so high is that we are focusing a good amount of our Measure A allotment to pay for the construction of the San Jose Creek Multipurpose Path Project. And we all know that our community is very invested in pavement rehabilitation and the pavement projects. And some may be wondering why we aren't spending more Measure A funds on pavement rehabilitation efforts. And the reason behind this is because the Measure A program limits how much can be spent on street projects, such as pavement rehabilitation projects. The Measure A ordinance includes provisions to track local agencies' spending on street projects, called the maintenance of effort. The purpose of the MOE is to discourage local agencies from reducing the amount of local funding that was historically spent on street and pavement projects before the Measure A ordinance came into effect. So Measure A funds were meant to supplement the local funding spent and not replace it. Local agencies are required to submit a five-year program of projects, also known as the POP, to SB CAG annually. The POP identifies all projects the city is spending Measure A funding on during the five-year period. The projects are listed by categories, which are established in the form provided by SB CAG. And this is the inform that's included in your packet as Exhibit A to the resolution. This year's staff is focusing the distribution of Measure A revenues to pavement rehabilitation and maintenance programs, similar to what we spent last year, and our project funding on the construction of the San Jose Creek Multipurpose Path. So this, the graph in this slide is a breakdown of the five-year POP, not including carryover from previous years, based on the categories established in that submittal form. And as you can see, that the majority of our Measure A revenue funding is being spent on alternative transportation projects, which is the San Jose Creek Bike Path Project, and then also our pavement rehabilitation and maintenance. The next two slides show a list of recently completed projects, as well as projects which are in final design and/or construction that have utilized Measure A revenue funds or will be utilizing Measure A funds currently and in the future. And from the list, recently completed projects, we have our pavement rehabilitation project from 2023. We have projects in the construction phase, which include Project Connect and our annual concrete repair project. And then projects that are out to bid or going out to bid, including the San Jose Creek Multipurpose Path or traffic signal upgrade project, and then two of our pavement projects for 2025. And then projects in design, which have used Measure A funding or will be, is Cathedral Oaks crib wall, our full trash capture project, as well as our 2026 pavement projects. And that concludes my presentation, so I'll open it up to questions.
At this point, we'll have questions from council?
I have a question. I think I know the answer. I'm pretty sure I do. On your chart on page 11, it's designate safe routes to school improvements. And then underneath it, safe routes to school improvements, two separate items, they are two separate line items. But there's no, there's nothing listed under safe routes to school improvements. Is that because the money is being used in your counting San Jose bike, multipurpose bike path? I mean, am I reading that correctly?
So in the, if you look at the Measure A POP submittal form?
Right, yes, that's what I'm looking at.
Okay. There is a line item for safe routes to school improvements, which we are allocating $25,000 each year of the five years. And that is going towards restriping, like pavement markings, crosswalks, those markings around schools.
Oh, great, okay.
And routes to school. And then, correct, the San Jose Creek Multipurpose Path also serves as a safe route to school.
That's what I thought, but I wanted to be sure. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, then I'll open it up for the public if they have any questions.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no speaker slips. If anyone on Zoom wishes to speak, please raise your hand, and I will call upon you. And Mayor, I have no one wishing to speak at this time.
Thank you. Would you like to speak, Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you.
We do it the old-fashioned way, and just look at me?
It's kind of weird. I'm just curious, when we applied the funding that we had for the 101 over crossing to the Project Connect, do we have to reestablish in some fashion the line item for that here? It's, or how does it impact Measure A?
Mayor Pro Tem, Casden, that was a named project, so that's different than this particular list.
All right. I, yes, thank you.
Any other questions? No? Okay, then go into council deliberation and close the public testimony section. I know that we're getting ready, we're looking at, I will just make a comment, I sit on SB CAG. We're looking at Measure A being renewed in 2038, I believe. It's a 30-year. So we're trying to make sure that people realize all the benefits that we are receiving from that funding, Measure A, on projects that we're doing here in Galita. So there are a lot, and the money's really been funded and spent, especially if you look at alternative transportation. So at this point, if I'm not seeing any other hands raised, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion to approve. I think you might have to read the whole.
Yeah, Mayor Pro Tem, Casden, if we could read the recommendation on this one, since it includes a resolution as part of the public hearing.
Okay. That we conduct a public hearing on the Measure A Five-Year Program of Projects for Fiscal Years 2025 to 2030 and adopt Resolution Number 25, next in line, entitled "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Galita, California, Adopting the Measure A Five-Year Local Program of Projects for FY 2025 to 2026 Through FY 2029 to 2030."
Do I have a second? Okay, we have a second. We can do a roll call vote?
Thank you, council members. Going to attempt to use the digital voting feature again here on the Creston panel, so give me just a moment. And my apologies, the voting feature is not working.
We'll do it the old-fashioned way.
We'll proceed to roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Kiriyako?
Aye.
Councilmember Reyes Martin?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tempor Casden?
Aye.
And Mayor Perodi?
Aye. Ayes have it. Thank you. We can move on to the next item.
Public hearing, item C2, Public Hearing on Needs, Goals, and Funding Priorities of the Community Development Block Grant Program for Incorporation into the 2025 to 2029 Consolidated Plan and 2025 to 2026 Action Plan.
Thank you. And this also is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing. We'll have a staff presentation. Council questions, public testimony, more questions if needed. I will close the public testimony, council deliberation, and we'll do the, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion. I was supposed to say that before, but.
You can raise it, you know.
Oh.
It's not quite raising. That's okay. I'll be extremely low-profile this evening.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Welcome, and thank you for joining this public hearing of the needs, goals, and funding priorities of the Community Development Block Grant Program. This hearing is a crucial step in finalizing the 2025-2029 Consolidated Plan and the 2025-2026 Annual Action Plan, which will steer the allocation of anticipated CBPG funds to enhance community development, affordable housing, and essential services within our region. The CBPG program administered by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development aims to develop vital urban communities by providing decent housing, a suitable living environment, and expanding economic opportunities principally for low- and moderate-income persons. Today's hearing will allow the opportunity to collect insights from residents, community stakeholders, and local organizations regarding the priorities, challenges, and opportunities that should influence the distribution of anticipated CBPG resources over the next five years. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Cassidy La Air, our Senior Management Analyst, and her consultant, Mr. David Munoz. And they will be presenting the information for you this evening.
Thank you. There we go.
Thank you, Ms. Plummer, and good evening. So today we'll be talking about the public hearing for CBPG. Just a little bit of background. The city receives an annual allocation of Community Development Block Round Funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Today we'll be talking about the Consolidated Plan, which is a five-year strategy for the investment of CBPG funds to address high-priority housing and community development needs. The action plan goes along with the Consolidated Plan in that it's how we actually carry out the goals of the Consolidated Plan. They are, it's a management tool to assess performance and track results from July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2030. In the development of the goals, we did partner with the County of Santa Barbara, the Cities of Longock and Santa Maria for the needs assessment and community outreach and community need survey. So we did gather over 400 results with the survey and in-person workshops. And we also had 50 stakeholder respondees as well to provide input. And that was for the public input and service provider workshops. The proposed a five-year goal, so the goals, those are defined by HUD. So for public services, we have the Provide Low and Moderate Income Youth, Seniors, and Residents with Special Needs, with a range of public services necessary to prevent homelessness and the effects of poverty. And the needs addressed that we gathered were to expand public services for low- and moderate-income youth, seniors, and residents with special needs, and to prevent and reduce homelessness. So those are custom to Galita. For the five-year outcomes, we're estimating about 2,265 persons assisted with those funds. The capital improvements, that's about 60% of allocation. That's to improve public facilities and infrastructure to benefit residents of predominantly low- and moderate-income areas, or those presumed under HUD regulations to be low and mod incomes, such as elderly and disabled adults. The needs we're addressing with the plan is to improve public facilities and infrastructure and address material barriers to accessibility. And we're estimating about 6,000 persons assisted. The last pot of money is for the administration of the program. And that is to provide for the timely and compliant administration of the CBPG program in accordance with HUD policy and federal regulations. The needs addressed would be all, and then also to ensure equal access to housing opportunity. For the anticipated CBPG resources, so this is for the five-year plan, five-year timeframe, we are utilizing last year's allocation as a baseline. So we still do not have this year's allocation, and the further years will be provided in the upcoming fiscal years. So for admin, over the five-year period, we're looking at about 292,000. For public services, so those are sub-recipient grants, we're looking at about 219,000. For capital projects, we're looking at about 951,000, for a total of about 1.4 million. And the admin is capped at 20% of the grant, as well as public services. The proposed one-year goals and how that we're going to carry out what we have established with the consolidated goals. We have the goal to expand public services for low- and moderate-income youth, seniors, and residents with special needs, and prevent and reduce homelessness. And so with the public services, we are looking at awarding ILO Vista Youth Projects, the Family Resource Center, for about 200 households. And the People Self-Help Housing Supportive Housing Program, looking at about 253 households. For capital improvements, we're looking at funding the City of Galita Matilda Park improvements for the full capital allocation. We do have some contingency language in there that if the all funding is not used for that project, it will go towards the GCC ADA improvements. And we're looking at about 2,000 people assisted with that. And we're looking about 2,000 people assisted with that project. And for the administration, it would be the remainder of the allocation at 53,000. And with that, that concludes the presentations.
Thank you. Back to council for questions. Councilmember Smith.
There's been a lot of talk recently about uncertainty as it relates to federal funding, and I understand that CDPG funds are federal funding. Has the city received any updates, or for now, is it presumed to be status quo?
It is presumed to be status quo, so we have not received any formal communication on what our allocation will be. So HUD does have very strict timelines, so we are staying the course until we hear otherwise.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kiriyako.
Thank you. Can you, for the funding that goes to People's Self-Help Housing, can you just give, for those watching at home in the audience, can you just give us kind of like a short breakdown of what the funding is being used? I think they're serving like 253 or 273 people, 253 households. I know they have a number of properties in the city area.
Yeah, of course. So for the People's Self-Help Housing Corporation, this would be supportive housing for low-income households. So this would be provide comprehensive clinical case management to 253 households across five affordable rental properties in Galita. So that's Villa La Esperanza, Casas de los Carneros, Isla Vista Apartments, and Stork Ranch Apartments, and Elwood Apartments. So they're looking at providing housing stability support with targeted social services to foster resident success and community resilience.
So they're helping keep people in their housing and keep them stable in neighborhoods throughout Galita?
Correct.
Wonderful, thank you.
Correct.
Any other questions? Not seeing any. Can we see if there's any public that would like to have a question?
Thank you, Mayor. I have no speaker slips for this item. If anyone on Zoom wishes to speak, please raise your hand, and I will call upon you. And Mayor, we have no one wishing to speak on Zoom at this time.
Okay. Okay, then I'll close the public testimony and entertain council deliberation. I would just like to make a comment. I want to thank staff for your hard work on this and the committee, because I used to do it with staff, and it's never easy. There's so many, if you look at the list of all the worthy organizations out there, but I think you picked two that, two selected are great choices. Also, I like the idea that, I think in years past, we would give very small amounts for, and the paperwork and what's involved in these grants, I'm glad we're giving larger, you know, portions of funding, splitting it that way. I think that's the right thing to do, so thank you for that. Okay, so I, Councilmember Kiriyako, Kiriyako, did you have something?
Oh, I just wanted to see if we could do this in two separate motions, one for each. My wife serves on the board for one of the organizations, and while there's no real legal requirement that I not be a part of the decision, I feel more comfortable not being part of any decision.
So you'll just recuse yourself, but you don't have to, he doesn't have to leave the room, does he? Just not vote.
Correct. It sounds as if it's not direct conflict, but.
I think the last time we had done this, we did the separate motions, but if you're comfortable with me just abstaining, then I'll abstain.
Okay.
Okay, okay, so we'll do two motions. Who would like to make the first one, or both? Councilmember Smith? Yeah?
Okay, so I'll start with, I'll move to approve the recommendation for CDPG funding in support of People's Self-Help Housing, Supportive Housing proposal in the amount of 16,968,050 cents.
I'll second. I'll do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Kiriyako.
Aye.
Councilmember Reyes Martin.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Porcasdan.
Aye.
Mayor Perodi.
Aye.
Okay, moving on, eyes have it. Move on to the second motion, if you'd like to continue.
I'll move to approve CDPG funding, the recommended funding for the Isla Vista Youth Projects Family Resource Center in the amount of $26,968.50.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Kiriyako.
Stain.
Councilmember Reyes Martin.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Porcasdan.
Aye.
Mayor Perodi.
Aye. Eyes have it. Thank you.
Do we need to approve the capital and the administration recommendations?
This would be to approve all of those to be included in the action plan, and then we'd be coming back in mid-May to finalize everything. So it would be.
Just want to make sure you have what you need.
Good question. Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, are we okay? Do we, moving on? Yes? Okay. We'll let them get settled. Okay.
Discussion action item D1, Agreement for Pilot Fourth of July Community Drone Show to be held at Dos Pueblos High School.
It's Kelly Hoover. Isn't that you?
Can everyone hear me? Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members, and everyone here in the audience, and to those watching at home. I'm Kelly Hoover, the Community Relations Manager for the City of Galita, and I am here to talk about an exciting possibility, that is, a Fourth of July drone show. So the city right now is currently fundraising and working with community partners to put on a pilot-free Fourth of July drone show at Dos Pueblos High School in the football stadium. Now, we are very still much in the planning stages of this, and if this were to happen, this is kind of the visual for you guys. Just imagine, doors would open at 6 o'clock, there would be food trucks, DJ Darla B would be playing, there would be a stage, there would be a dance floor, potentially other activities planned. There would be an approximately 14-minute drone show beginning at approximately 8:30 PM. It would be customized, choreographed, animated light show with 150 drones that are able to fly 400 feet in the air, to be seen from seven to 10 miles away. A big step in making this happen is before you tonight, and that is to enter into an agreement with a drone show vendor, drone show.com, to put on this show. Now, this is the same vendor that the City of Santa Maria used last year and is using again this year, which says a lot right there. And this drone show company does shows across the country, has done the Fourth of July for Salt Lake City for many years, and has just signed a contract to do more. Now, the cost to put on a drone show itself is $50,000, and we have, as of tonight, raised a majority of that cost, $43,500, to be exact. Who really gave us momentum with this idea was Yardi. Yardi Systems generously donated $25,000, and then we've also received generous donations from Teledyne Flier, Deckers, the Galita Valley Historical Society, Marburg, Community West Bank, and Santa Barbara Airbus. We also have the support of the Santa Barbara Unified School District and Dos Pueblos High School in making the venue possible, and this is a lot more affordable than Gersh Park would be, and Gersh Park also has issues with closing some of their fields for a seating project, and then you get into fencing and all of that sort of thing. We should also mention, we have the support of the Santa Barbara Airport, who has let us know that they are excited to see this happen for our community. So we're on our way. There's a lot of momentum here. But tonight, I understand that, you know, you need to know what the budget is and what this means for the city now and for the future. So the estimated total cost of this event is between $65,000 to $70,000, and that does mean we would have to raise more money, approximately $20,000 to $25,000 to cover this event. And that would be, you know, security fees, custodial services, entertainment, audiovisual, promotion, all the costs that come with doing even a simple event. So there is more work to be done if we were to move in this direction. And we should also say that, you know, by doing this, we wouldn't be committing to do it, doing it in the future. We would want to see, did the community even like it? What was the turnout? And also to see who would want to take it over in the future. We are talking with community groups who may be interested in stepping up and actually taking it over in the future, and then we would just step in as supportive partners in that. So we have had people say to us, and I'm sure you've heard this as well, why not fireworks? You know, why go to drones and why not fireworks? So in order to answer that, I would have to, you know, go back and give a brief history. And the history would be that, you know, this all started back at UCSB Harder Stadium, actually, put on by the Galita Rotary Club, and they put on this event, and then it went on to Gersh Park, and it was there for many years. It became a beloved tradition. So it went away during COVID, and it never returned. And part of that is because it is expensive to put on a fireworks show, and it also is a lot to manage in an event of that magnitude if you're a group of volunteers. And then there's a lot of issues with fireworks. There's fire hazards, there's people who are noise-sensitive, pets, there's issues to potential environmental impacts, like the snowy plover. So there is a lot of people who maybe want to see something else, and by providing this, Galita would have an alternative to fireworks. And if people still want to see fireworks, they can go to Santa Barbara and see them, and Galita is offering an alternative to that. But, you know, again, it's a pilot project. It's just, we're in the middle of fundraising. We want to see how the council feels tonight about us continuing with it, and I'm here to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Questions from council? Councilmember Kiriyako.
Just a couple. I guess my first question is, do we have a sense, I know this is the first time we've done this and we're working with a vendor, do we have a sentence, a sense from a maintenance of effort standpoint of how much less work an endeavor like this is compared to what the fireworks show had been? We have some experience with the fireworks show, we don't have experience with the drone show. Do we have a sense of, is this a lot more work, a little bit more work, a lot less work? It's okay if you don't have an answer, but I felt like I had to ask the question.
Councilmember Kiriyako, yeah, we, this is uncharted territory. We know a lot of cities are transitioning to drones for all the issues that we just mentioned, but this is uncharted territory for us. We do know the fireworks shows were a lot of work and expensive. So, you know, this, this year, this first year, we're looking at just something very simple, you know? Go to DP High School, there's parking. If we think there's going to be a need for a shuttle service, Santa Barbara Airbus has offered to help us with that. And it's, it's pretty a simple concept of just going, finding a seat in the stadium, watching the show, and having some activities and food trucks, and kind of just keeping it real simple with DJ Darla B playing for us, too.
And then my second question, do we know if the food trucks that are being envisioned for this will maybe be City of Galita businesses?
Absolutely. Everything we do will be City of Galita, and you will probably see Galita in the sky spelled out. That's another cool thing about the drones, is you can actually choreograph a show and tell a story, and so we'll, we'll be excited to do that as well.
Well, I mean, at first glance, and I guess I'll go from questions, just a comment, I mean, at first glance, it seems like a really wonderful blend of kind of old-timey Fourth of July, you know, what Galita loves, but also the, you know, technology embracing new ideas, having Fleur and Yardi involved. I mean, Galita's really become a tech hub, and so I kind of like the blend of old-fashioned and new tech here. So this is very exciting. Thank you.
Councilmember Luz Reyes Martin.
Thank you. I also just have some comments. I really want to applaud your initiative, and I'm sure the initiative of everyone else you're working with. It has been something we've heard about, you know, how much folks enjoyed having another Fourth of July event, whether it was the fireworks specifically, or just the, you know, all the activity at Gersh Park. I used to live right off of Gersh Park during the fireworks, and it was really fun to go and see community. And, you know, I love fireworks, and I saw all of the, you know, sometimes negative impacts of it, you know, especially to pets, to elderly folks, or anyone who is really noise-sensitive, the environmental impacts, everything you've shared. So I think it is really prudent for us to look at an alternative, and I'm really glad that the technology for the drone shows has really grown so much in the last couple of years. Actually, recently saw one at Dodger Stadium, and it was really neat, and kids loved it, and you, they can be really creative and customized to, to your point, tell a story, have music. They're really enjoyable shows, and I think that will be really neat for the community to see. And I think it makes a lot of sense, and I'm really glad that the city is helping kind of do the proof of concept for the community, and then I, I hope that there are some community groups who can, you know, either take it on or work together to take it on, and to your point, then we, you know, provide support into the future. So I hope that folks come out to check it out. It sounds like a great, family-friendly, local event, so thank you for all your hard work on it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
I have a question about insurance. I understand with events, you know, one of the costs associated with it can be insurance, and from what I could see, it looks like the, the vendor, you know, ensures the risk associated with it, with the drones themselves. But for the event, is, is the city responsible? Does the city insure, like, if somebody falls and trips at the event or injures themselves? Is that something where the city takes responsibility, or would that be the school district?
Councilmember Smith? I don't want to answer that out of turn, but I will say that they do have liability insurance, as you mentioned, and then we are a city insuring a safe event, so I'll turn it over to Winnie.
So in terms of insurance, this drone show will insure for their own actions, and so there's 2 million of commercial general liability insurance, as well as aircraft insurance. Of course, the use of facilities, we will need to enter into an agreement with the school district, and that we, in that agreement, we will figure out liabilities and risks.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you. So I guess first, I understood that with drone shows, there are viewing angles? Is that right? There's some ways to see it. Could you explain how that plays out?
Absolutely, Mayor Protem. The way it works is, the best viewing is going to be in the stadium itself. However, it will be visible, depending on weather, for seven to 10 miles away. But let's say it's spelling USA. If you're sitting in a different place, you may see ASU. So you're, you're better off being where you can see it best, but that doesn't mean if you're a neighbor and you have a, a nice view, you might, might be able to see it from there either. We don't want to guarantee that, but, you know, a tree might be blocking your, your view, but the best seating will be in the stadium itself, and you'll be able to actually see the show as how it was meant.
As opposed to people thinking we're celebrating Arizona State University? Yeah, because actually, as I think back on the previous version, that lots of people would sit outside on the, on the street near Albertson's rather than go in, because we charged people to go inside and pay. So Albertson's was loaded with people on the lawns there. Not, the other question I had was, how many people does the stadium seat?
We have about 2,000 that it can seat in the actual seats themselves, because we will close the visitor side, so it'll just be the home side that you can watch it from, the home section. And then you'll have the track and the grass of the turf itself.
For people to stand in or sit on?
Sit.
Put blankets?
Yeah.
And how many people, do we have some estimate of how many people used to come to the fireworks show?
Yeah, I mean, that's the thing about these community events, you don't know, you never know really what the turnout is going to be, and so we're really going to have to see, but we're estimating we'll get several thousand people.
Well, I just, I'm wondering if we knew how many turned up previously when, when we did fireworks, it might be a useful proxy at least to get a sense. There might be more, there might be less. There might be more, there might be less, but it's a starting point. I think those are my questions.
That was my question as well, the seating, how many would the stadium hold? So they're only allowing on one side? And why is that?
The way, Madam Mayor, the way it goes with the drone show is to, to see it, the best viewing is from the home section side. And the visitor side will be blocked off for the drones to actually go up and fly over that area. So you don't want people seated there. You want them safely seated in the one section.
Okay. And I'm really glad that you mentioned the history of how the fireworks show started. And I've received one or two emails, and not understanding, I think, that we were never really responsible for the fireworks show, it was the Rotary Club, but we did contribute to it. So that was, you know, I think people were a little confused on that and wondering why we wouldn't do it again.
No, I think you made a great distinction there. Mayor, the, when we say our show, I mean, it's in our community, but it was the Rotary Club doing it. And so from that perspective, I think one of the benefits that has come up is there is no admission fee, so they're more accessible to more people. That may, in fact, play into Mayor Protem's question about how many people will come out. Well, you know, usually people are enticed by free events instead of paying for it, so I would have an expectation it might be a little bit bigger. It's our first year, so who knows? We may have a lot more people showing up than we expect, or, you know, significantly fewer. But in this case, this pilot program, it is the city putting it on, right? And the hope is to hand it back to somebody in the future going forward if it goes well. And so we just really want to make that distinction of what was done in the past. We have some sense of what things cost and how it operated, but they weren't our events. So just to be clear.
Thank you for that. And I think it's going to be a popular, and that's why I'm, there, there could be possibly more than 2,000. And this will be free, right, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think it's going to be hugely popular, so. Well, this, it's like you said, it's a pilot, we're just see how it goes, you know? Take it from there. So are we looking, oh, oh, sorry, public, of course. They must have something they'd like to say.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no speaker slips at this time, and if anyone wishes to speak on Zoom, please raise your hand. Mayor, we have one person wishing to speak. Robert, if you could please accept the prompts you're about to see on your screen, and make sure to unmute yourself.
Good evening again.
Good evening.
My questions were seating and attendance capacities, and those have been mentioned more than anything. My other concern would be parking, though, and especially parking out on Cathedral Oaks, trying to get in through the softball area and all that, might be a concern. And then something not directly involved with, with the drones, but wondering if you guys have any ideas on enforcing your fireworks ban and, and trying to stop some of the illegal fireworks that have been shot off in the neighborhoods, such as what Santa Maria does to enforce their ban? And that's it.
Thank you.
Mayor, we might have a short response to that last point.
I'm sorry. We usually work in conjunction with the sheriff's office. Kelly and her team also do put out press releases and information about safely enjoying the Fourth of July. Typically, what we hear from the sheriff's office is by the time somebody does let off a, a firework, you know, and they're able to respond, chances are they're not going to, the person won't be standing there, you know, with the packaging and all that. But most of what they try to do is education upfront, so if they know about public problem areas, they will have increased patrols in those areas. Sometimes we've heard in Old Town, other parts have been in the Del Norte neighborhood up by Dos Pueblos, ironically. So this might be a helpful alternative by not having fireworks that folks can go to. Sometimes they create their own shows, and so this would probably dissuade a lot of those from doing that. But again, it's just, you know, if you hear something, say something. But on that type of night with that many things, calls for service going on, it's highly unlikely you would actually catch the person in the act of setting a firework. But education works over the best way to approach it.
I would just think their presence, you know, I know over the last couple of years, they definitely have, sheriff's department have actively been up and down streets. And, you know, I, I know that, that just having their presence makes a difference. It wasn't as bad last year as it was maybe the year before.
And just to the comment that was made earlier about traffic and circulation, like any event, whether it's the city's event or nonprofit or somebody else doing it, when there is a permit issued for that, it does go through the review of our public works team, it goes through our sheriff's office and neighborhood services to ensure we actually have adequate circulation and safety concerns also addressed as well. We would not exempt ourselves from this, given that we are prominently featured as putting this event on, but it would go through the same reviews as any other event would.
Thank you. Councilmember Luz Reyes Martin?
Thank you. Not so much a question, but I think it would be great in, on this topic, as we get closer to Fourth of July, to do some information to the public about what to do if there are illegal fireworks, because I don't want the message to be, don't bother calling because nothing's going to happen, because I think people do get really frustrated when they hear or see illegal fireworks. So if we can give them some guidance on what the law is, what they should do, even if it doesn't result in, you know, someone getting caught. But I get the emails and calls, you know, that night and the next morning. And people do get really concerned about fires and, and just the, the noise and all that. So if there's anything we can do, not just about the public education, but also the consequences that are related to, you know, illegal fireworks, and just encouraging them to come to the drone show instead.
Yeah, I think Ms. Hoover, in the past, working with the sheriff's office on citing specific codes of what, what could happen, and then also to just the practice of, you know, be a good neighbor, think about folks, you know, trying to go both ways, the, you know, penalizing way, and then the also, just the educational way. So, of course.
Councilmember Kiriyako?
Just a suggestion, maybe someone from staff could contact the city of Santa Maria. They have hired private aircraft to patrol and pinpoint locations where there were lots of launches happening. I think they've actually gone ahead and issued, like, significant numbers of citations in the past. I don't, can't say that that's been effective. I don't know enough about it to know if they've seen a year-over-year reduction because of the enforcement. But maybe just something to maybe just do a quick touch with them and see how they feel, whether or not it's effective or not, and whether or not, from a financial standpoint, like, that kind of expenditure needed for that is worth it. And then in terms of areas, yeah, definitely Old Town, near San Jose Creek, Armidos, that area.
Sure.
I have a question. Doesn't Santa Maria sell fireworks? But that they don't allow them? Oh, I, I'm confused on that one. Okay, I'll, I'll leave that one alone. Any other questions?
Are they called the Safe and Sane? I think that's what the branding is. It's a different kind of...
It is legal? It's the ones that are legal? Oh, okay.
Mayor Prodi and members of the council, yes, the city of Santa Maria does sell, well, not the city of Santa Maria, the organizations within the city limits do sell the Safe and Sane fireworks. The comment about the firework ban is related to the illegal fireworks that in past years have been really significant in that area. And then they also do their drone show to try to dissuade some of that negative use.
Okay. Was that well-attended, the drone show?
Yes, the, the staff shared it was well-attended, it was well-received, and as Ms. Hoover mentioned, they're going back for a round two, so very exciting.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Mayor Protem?
Well, not so much a question, it's just that, yeah, it's on. That, just in general, and, you know, the foundations for a community aren't just the physical places, the physical sites, it's also the shared events and the shared gatherings and so forth. And that includes the damn dinner, which you have responsibility for.
Yeah, not just me.
Earthing. And the holiday parade, and now, you know, this is one that was really missed by people. And so many people, people with kids, people who grew up here, they all remember taking their kids to the, the fireworks show. And so it's, it's a big deal that we're getting this back this year. And we'll see how it goes. I mean, for myself, I, I remember I was a Boy Scout, and every year, we would have to march on the Fourth of July. So they made us wear, I'm old, so they would make us wear spats, which were a real pain to put on, is my recollection. You'd have to loop them around your ankles and so forth, and everyone hated it. No, it went around, like, here. It was supposed to cover it, I guess, from mud? I don't know. But, but yeah, every year, we would march in the Fourth of July parade. And people, the opportunity to have people to have those shared memories of GLEDA is, it's a, it's great that we accomplished this, and I appreciate your working so hard to do it.
Councilmember Smith, did you have something?
More of a comment. I think it will be important, I, I would anticipate preparing for, you know, a sellout event and plans to turn people away. And on that note, too, because this will be in a new neighborhood, I think it'll be important to do proactive outreach into, into the El Encanto Heights and an area around Dos Pueblos, because there's also impacts, right, related to, you know, parking and the side streets and traffic potentially, and, you know, other, you know, for people who choose not to participate. So I think it'll be important to make sure that the neighborhood is, is aware that the event is coming and to prepare accordingly.
That's a good thought. I like the idea that we have, we will have two events. We would have the, through the Historical Society and Stow House, the old-fashioned Fourth of July, which is always well-attended and really great, and, and then this in the evening. So it seems like they would complement each other. I guess we are entertaining, who would like to entertain this motion? Oh, it's your district.
Yes, I just want to commend, this is such a great example of a, you know, an excellent public, public-private partnership. And we'll look forward to receiving community feedback on how everything goes. We want to make sure to hear from everybody. And I will move to approve the agreement for the pilot Fourth of July community drone show to be held at Dos Pueblos High School.
Do we have to say the amount?
Oh, okay. And, and to, to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with DroneShow.com LLC for a Fourth of July community drone show with a total not to exceed amount of $50,000.
Do I have a second?
One second.
Okay, we have a second. Roll call vote?
Councilmember Kiriyako?
Aye.
Councilmember Reyes Martin?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Poracasden?
Aye.
And Mayor Perodi?
Aye. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. This is real now. All right, let's go.
Madam Mayor, I would ask that we take a short break, they need to reboot the server again.
Okay, all right. Short break. Short break. Are we, okay, let's bring this meeting back to order. I think we have an announcement real quick.
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. We are still experiencing technical issues with our live stream on the Meetings and Agendas page, but the meeting is still running on YouTube, and it's running on Zoom, and public comment can still be taken through the Zoom webinar.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Did you read the items?
Of course. Item D2, Public Works Department Priority Setting Workshop and Fiscal Year 2025 to 2026 Annual Work Program.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. I'm Nina Buena, your Public Works Director. And tonight, Public Works will be discussing the Public Works Work Program. But before the presentation, I would take, I would like to take some time to highlight our key accomplishments and milestones of the past year. Public Works improves and maintains various assets in the city of Galita, including right-of-way infrastructures such as streets, bridges, sidewalks, streetlights, as well as parks, open space, and storm-prone systems, and other Public Works facilities. This is accomplished through our seven divisions, which implement projects and programs using a combination of maintenance crews, professional staff, consultants, and contractors, as outlined in this work program. As part of these ongoing efforts to maintain and improve infrastructure, Project Connect is now one year into construction. The northern side of the bridge has been completed, and the contractor is working to swap over traffic to complete the southern side of the bridge. Equle Street Extension is well underway, and the grading and drainage improvements have been completed. The San Jose Creek multipurpose path is currently out to bid, and the contract is expected to be awarded summer of 2025. This has been an exceptional year for Public Works, marked by numerous achievements and milestones, with the completion of nine construction projects, including Elwood Mesa Monarch Butterfly Habitat Irrigation Project, the Hollister Intrum Striping Project, and the 2023 Pavement Project, which was honored with the American Public Works Association, APWA Transportation Project of the Year Award. And remarkably, a remarkable team drives our department's success. We hired 16 positions this year, and 12 of those positions were promotions, a testament to the strength of our staff and the outstanding leadership that supports their growth. Speaking of leadership, sorry, I have an issue. Speaking of leadership, we are particularly proud to share that Autumn Glazer received the prestigious APWA Leader of the Year Award, further highlighting the excellence and dedication within our ranks. Public Works has also secured several significant grants this year, demonstrating our continued commitment to advancing projects. This year's accomplishments showcased the incredible talent, hard work, commitment of our team and the entire Public Works team. We look forward to building on this momentum over the next year. Tonight, I will be presenting the work program with Ms. Glazer, the Assistant Public Works Director, and Ms. Fox, our Business Administrator and Division Manager. I'm going to hold, hand it over to Ms. Fox.
Thank you.
All right, while Ms. Buena, Ms. Glazer, and I will be providing the general presentation, this list here includes our division managers and representatives from our seven divisions, many of which are here tonight to help answer any questions. On our agenda tonight, we'll have a brief presentation with an opportunity for public comment, as well as council discussion and feedback on future priorities and direction for staff. This item will conclude with the adoption of the Public Works Fiscal Year 25-26 Annual Work Program.
I'm going to go over the org chart briefly. From last year, we have the following changes. We have two lead workers, one for parks and open space and one for street maintenance, specifically to oversee the splash pad and various maintenance operations. The updated org chart also reflects some positions that are operationally controlled, meaning that while their salaries are funded through their prospective divisions, their day-to-day work is managed by other divisions to ensure efficiency and streamlined oversight.
All right, moving on to the Administration Division. We oversee the overall functioning of the Public Works Department. We're responsible for day-to-day operations of the department, including the Capital Improvement Program projects. The Administration Division monitors and manages the department's budget activities, ensuring that all expenditures are within appropriation. We coordinate timely and responsive input to the development of the Capital Improvement Program, the financial plan, and annual budget. And we oversee the department's approximately 128 contracts and agreements and the accounts payable process. All right, some highlights of recent accomplishments this fiscal year include the ongoing department reorganization, the coordination and preparation of the department to your budget in this work program. And our mighty admin team helps facilitate various fiscal activities, such as PO creation, contract processing, and this year, they process nearly 1,800 invoices. All right, so our ongoing and future projects include grant administration and reimbursement of our 22 active grants. We're developing a comprehensive onboarding process within the department, and our oversight of committees, including PTAC and the council report process.
The Transportation and Development Engineering Division, as you may remember, last year, we combined Development Engineering and Transportation into this division. So this division is the gatekeeper for development infrastructure, ensuring that all development and encroachment permit projects comply with city standards and prioritize traffic safety. The TDE manages key responsibilities, including land development review, engineering, encroachment permits, and the annual pavement and concrete maintenance programs. The division also addresses traffic-related inquiries, coordinating traffic signal maintenance, and advances in important initiatives like Vision Zero and the ADA Transition Plan. These efforts help maintain a safe and efficient and accessible environment for the community. The division has processed 23 development projects, 185 permits and transportation permits. This is approximately five permits per week. 3.1 center lane miles of pavement were resurfaced and paved as part of the 2023 pavement project. The division reduced speed limits on various city streets, and it's installed approximately 100 new speed limit signs, lowering speeds by five to 10 miles per hour. The TDE Division remains committed to its mission and has several key initiatives planned for the upcoming year. Based on available resources, the division aims to revamp the city's standards and complete the Nexus Study to update the development impact fees and street pavement preservation moratorium. Additionally, the division plans to develop a five-year pavement and concrete program, and contingent on security and funding, launch the Vision Zero Initiative Plan. So I'm going to go over the pavement project for this year. This year, we have the 2025 Annual Payment Project for the residential streets and for arterial streets. So we have a base bid and additive alternate process, depending on how the bids come in. So if the bids come in well, we'll be able to add more streets. So with the base bid, we have approximately $13 million, and the base bid plus additive alternates is about $21 million. We're scheduled to start construction for the arterial project August of 2025, and for the residential, September 2025. And this map lays out the 2025 residential and arterial pavement projects. The purple shows what the base bid is, and the red shows the alternative bids. So once this is completed, the 2025 residential project will resurface 22.1 center lane miles, and the arterial pavement project will resurface and pave 3.1 center lane miles of roadway.
Our Parks and Open Space Team are responsible for maintaining our many parks and more than 500 acres of open space. Our crews and contractors continue to address down trees, among many other regular maintenance activities, including but not limited to playground inspections, encampment responses, open space management, daily janitorial services, and defensible space management. Our team has successfully spent the $3.9 million Coastal Conservancy Grant and transformed portions of the Butterfly Grove, including preparation for two temporary nurseries that received all of those plants and trees, all of the preparation work and running the volunteer planting days that have been taking place over the past year. Trail maintenance work, hundreds of trees, it might even be more than that, hundreds of trees planted, and the completion of the irrigation project. If you haven't taken a stroll through the Butterfly Grove, I highly recommend it. We've also performed field renovations at Johnny D. Wallace Park and the Galita Community Center, and we did secure the $1 million Urban Forestry Grant funds, and unfortunately, this grant was put on hold earlier this year, but we will continue to update if we receive any. Looking forward, the Elwood Mesa Monarch Butterfly Management Plan, Phase One Implementation, is an ongoing project. We were successful in constructing a portion of Phase One, but there is a number of projects remaining on the list. In addition to that, there's a lot of maintenance that comes with new plants and trees. So our team is working closely with UCSB and other partners to continuing, to continue the monitoring efforts and maintenance of the newly planted areas. We will also continue to look for funding opportunities to finish up that Phase One Implementation Project. We are working closely with the county to finalize our county fire contract. The Board of Supervisors approved today, so we are underway, and we expect crews to be on site by the end of the month and continue likely through the fall on the hazardous fuels reduction. Our team is gearing up to be ready for operating and maintaining the splash pad once construction is completed. Our Capital Improvement Program team manages our CAP delivery process, grant applications, construction management, and many other aspects related to our delivering projects. Project Connect is currently under construction, as Ms. Buena mentioned. Evergreen Park Drainage Project was constructed this year after significant storm damage. We were also awarded the $11.1 million Reconnecting Communities Grant for the San Jose Creek Multipurpose Path, which has been delayed earlier this year, but we are rescheduled for a webinar this month to hopefully learn more about the state of that grant. Also, we'll keep everyone updated. Looking ahead, San Jose Creek Bike Path or Multipurpose Path is out to bid and is anticipated to be under construction by the end of the year. Cathedral Oaks Crib Wall is moving forward into final design after evaluations were completed on the wall types. The citywide traffic signals project is scheduled to be out to bid this summer. And while our team continues to move forward on final design for both the San Jose Creek Fish Passage Project and full trash capture.
Street Lighting Division. The Street Lighting Division is responsible for maintaining city streetlights. The Streetlight Division successfully facilitated the installation of holiday lights in Old Town, enhancing the festive atmosphere. One of the goals for this year is to improve safety. The division plans to establish engineering standards for strengthened, for streetlights, and creating a wiring identification protocol to collaborate with USA and DIG Alerts Services.
Our Street Maintenance Team maintains all of our street, bike lane, and bike paths, right-of-way landscaping and irrigation systems, street sweeping, traffic control, sidewalks, bridges, really basically anything in the public right-of-way. This year, we've completed the trimming of Zone Two, which is over 2,000 trees, and an additional 154 trees that are city-owned at city-owned facilities. We've also done a lot of work on our own corporate yard, cleaning and restaging. We're in the process of remodeling to bring our crews into a temperature-controlled building and give them each their own office or desk space. This is a continuous project as we continue to update our own city facility. Our crews also come into work very early in the morning hours every couple of weeks to pressure-wash Old Town, including our bus stops, and irrigate the newly-planted magnolias on Magnolia Street. They also worked closely with our construction crew to install the, all of the over 100 signs for the reduced speed limits. Looking forward, our team will be replanting vegetation along the Hollister Class One Bike Path between Pacific Oaks and Pebble Beach Drive. The Public Works, we're also in the RFP process for the next four years of the citywide median landscape and city hall landscape contracts. And the trimming of trees in Zone Four and Five will be completed, which will get us, which will complete the zone, all three zones, and provide the city with a three-year trim schedule, transitioning from a five-year trim schedule, which will enhance the health of trees and improve our public safety.
The Environmental Service Team continues to educate the public about our natural resources, promote waste reduction and material sustainability, maintain a clean community, and protect the city's watershed and creeks. This year, the city of Galita achieved 70% total diversion rate, successfully diverting 17,200 tons of waste from landfills. To put this in perspective, this is equivalent to removing the weight of 34 statues of liberty. Our team continues to prioritize public education to protect our natural resources. This year, ES provided field trips and educational opportunities for over 1,400 students, and engaged the community through eight public events. ES is ready to develop and prepare the necessary documents for the new MS4 permit scheduled to hit this fiscal year. The full trash capture program will be developed this year under the oversight of ES, and the department will introduce a new textile recovery program to promote sustainability and reduce waste. Currently, we have 39 full-time employees with eight vacancies, resulting in a 20% vacancy rate. I want to note that we have never been fully staffed, yet we continue to accomplish a great deal with the resources available to us. By leveraging tools and applying creative solutions, we maximize efficiency and deliver more with less. more with less. Our mission is clear: We create a safe, inclusive place to live and work by protecting, maintaining, and improving our built and natural environment through sustainable and fiscally responsible practices. We are here to serve the community with a commitment and with a commitment of excellence. Our goal is to build a strong, resilient department that delivers results while fostering a positive and collaborative work environment where talent thrives. Our collective efforts over the past year have demonstrated our strength, and as we look ahead, we are well-positioned to tackle the challenges of the year to come. With the momentum we've built, we are ready to take on next year's tasks and continue delivering meaningful projects, programs, and services that enhance the quality of life for all who call Galita home. With that said, we recommend to discuss the work priorities and adopt an annual work program for the fiscal year 2526 for the Public Works Department. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, like to ask any questions? Who wants to go first? Oh, it's working now? Okay, hey. Mayor Protem Kasten.
Yeah. So there were a couple that I wanted to clarify. I guess the first one is, so this summer, you have a traffic study that's going to be completed that maps out various, well, you can describe what it does. I just wanted to understand first what it is that we're getting, if I have it right.
Mayor Protem Kasten, are you talking about the Vision Zero Action Plan?
No. I believe, I thought there was a study that's going to be considering, looking for, maybe it's for DIF fees, or looking for the impacts of future development and seeing how that development is going to use our transportation system and so forth.
That's correct. That's the Nexus model. We're currently working on that with a consultant.
So what I'm wondering about, and the context is with the, I appreciate your response on the Bike and Ped Master Plan. And so as, you know, in emails, there are sort of two philosophies. And one is, as the department has done, recognizing that money is constrained, is as you've done, is when there is a repaving, to consider and implement at that time a bike route. And the problem is, it's not really strategically discovered. There's not a sense that this is a priority to have it in this location. It's just an opportunity and taking advantage of an opportunity. And the problem is, is that, number one, the locations, the sites where we really do think there's an important need for a bike route along there might not get addressed in a timely fashion. And second, if we only develop a third of a route, like Cathedral Oaks, there's a little segment right now where there's a bike lane, but the rest of it, it's, there's not bike lanes. And as a result, somebody who's fearful or anxious about riding cheek-to-jowl with traffic won't ride because, just because a third is now safer. They ride when the whole route feels safer. All of this is to say, so, but I understand, it's expensive to put in, you know, whole lanes and whole routes. Where I'm going with all of this, and this is a long-winded way to start my question, is just in the context of that Nexus Study, what would be really helpful is if we were able to understand where are those routes, both where people are using it now and even more importantly, where they might be using it in the future? Are there certain routes where we think we have a real possibility of diverting a lot of cars into bikes if we made this a safe route? And, you know, and then we take it from there. You know, it might be it's doable, it might not be doable, but at least can we find out whether it's through that or whether SB CAG data? Can you?
So the Nexus Study will look at bicycle and pedestrian traffic, and the way they measure what's a good route or not a good route is conflict points. So that'll give us an idea of where the paths are really needed, so we'll have that developed from the Nexus Study.
So the Nexus Study, so it's for both, especially both for current residents, will we know, for instance, here's where they're going, that like, there's going to be a lot of traffic along this route and that route, and so we would be able to look at that and say, if we had a bike path from this point to this point, that could really have the potential for reducing cars.
So the model doesn't look at it that way. They look at the routes that pedestrians or bicycles would take, like for instance, going to Dos Pueblos, and they count the conflict points. So that's what that will do.
So, in other words, it'll look at where kids are located and say, here's the route, or no, it'll just say, if you were located in West Galita, here are the alternative routes that you could take to get there, but not looking necessarily at where people are or how they're getting.
That's correct. The model will look at all the development going in and future development, and it'll develop car patterns and, you know, how many vehicle trips there will be, so that will be developed, but they don't do that for pedestrians or bicyclists.
Well, let me ask you this. I understand that SB CAG using telephone data has some sense of where, of where cars are going, where people are going from this point to that point. If we would be able to talk with them and see if there's a way of identifying that certain routes have a, have much greater potential, that we would want, if we could, to develop that as a bike project in the future?
We can look into that.
I'd appreciate that.
And Madam Mayor, and Councilmember Kasten, if I can add one more point to this conversation, just a reminder, although all the points that were made and kind of the back and forth are absolutely true, I just want to remind the council of the focus of the study. So all that, while true, the focus of the study is development impact fees.
Yeah.
And so, so the way they do it, and it's prescribed by law, this data comes out of it, but the focus is to take our existing CIP projects and find that, create the nexus between that and potential build-out, and then calculate a fee that can be imposed on development when they go through the entitlement process. So the consultant who prepares, does that Nexus Study and calculates the fee, they're not going to advise us on new projects. They're going to take what's in the existing CIP. We've already, that's what establishes what our need, what we believe the need is. It might not be accurate. The council may want to change it over time, but they're going to take that, and that will be the basis for the fee. So I just wanted to, a lot of this, it's going to have a lot of interesting data, I won't deny that, but the focus, when we entered into that scope, and it's very prescribed by law, is to calculate our development impact fees, so those can be used when projects come through the planning department for entitlements.
Okay. Thank you. I, another couple of questions. The beach access for Elwood Beach, that would be for the, like, which routes are those that you would be aiming to, and is that coming up this year to, maybe hypothetically?
Madam Mayor, and Mayor Protem Kasten, I'm George Thompson, Parks and Open Space Manager. So there's two beach access points currently under design, and as a quick aside, they're funded by the Rufio Oil Spill Settlement. One of the access points is straight out from Santa Barbara Shores Drive, and the second one is the beach access point that we commonly call RB, so it's where there's the red brick chimney structure.
And one that's just falling apart. That's a big project, that, isn't it?
They're both fairly sizable projects, yes. And should add, the Rufio Oil Spill Settlement funding is only funding design, so we don't have funding for construction, so we're looking for grant funds for those.
Oh, okay. Well, that'll be exciting. You had mentioned the county met earlier today on wildfire, or somebody did. That was, okay. Do you know, like, one of the questions I had was for the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, and that ours is due, did that come up? Did they, are they, do we have our plan on, up?
The item at the Board of Supervisors today was on consent, so there was no discussion, and specifically, the action was to approve an agreement that the city council actually already approved, so it was just the Board of Supervisors agreeing to move forward with having county firefighters funded by Cal Fire Grant that the city got due fuel reduction at Elwood.
Okay. So we don't know, do we know when they're planning on updating the wildfire protection plan, community?
That work effort would actually be internal to the city, but obviously coordinated with county fire, and our understanding is that currently would reside in, I believe, Neighborhood Services Department.
Okay. I didn't realize. I thought previously we had, the county was, had offered to, well, anyway, whatever it is, I was mistaken. Okay, thank you. And I just had one or two other. The. I guess, oh yeah, you did, and did you mention with the trees that you were moving from a three-year to a five-year schedule, or did I hear that right?
Mayor Protem Kasten, yes, that is correct.
And the advantage to that, because it sounds like that's less frequent, but, but in fact, it's going to be, it's better because, would you explain?
It's actually more frequent because we will, we will visit each of those zones. We'll come back to that zone every three years instead of every five years.
Okay. So it's, so you're moving from a five-year cycle to a three-year cycle?
Correct.
Okay. I, I guess I heard it backwards. Okay, so we're going to be hitting those trees on a more frequent basis than we were before.
Or street trees, yes.
That makes more sense as something to praise. And, and we have, in the context of our budget, we have enough funding, so we're going to be able to establish a regimen, a regular service, and maintain that three-year cycle?
That is currently our proposed budget, and that was our past three years, the same budget, so we're recommending that same one going forward.
Oh, so the amount that we've been spending thus far is sufficient to maintain that schedule?
Yes. So we were, we've moved to this three-year schedule in the past three years. I think prior to that, it was the five-year.
And this, these trees that we're talking about are street trees?
These are street trees and city facilities.
And city facilities. And also, I assume that are they, does this include the trees that are adjacent or abutting homes that are public, that are, are trees but are near houses, so potentially a wildfire concern? Does it also cover those, or they're separate?
I guess if there are street trees in the public right-of-way and not on any, so the distinction is our open space and parks are the other trees that the city maintains, so anything within the public right-of-way. So those are on a different schedule and not necessarily in that three-year rotation.
Okay, so those trees that might be on, on open space that are abutting homes, that's a separate process and so forth? That's, and this is just the street trees that are in the medians, that are in the sidewalk and so forth? Okay.
This particular one, yes, yeah.
Great. Okay, those are my questions right now. Thank you.
Councilmember Kiriakko.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We start with a couple of Project Connect-related questions. In the Project Connect area, part of the area that is in the interim striping project, part of Project Connect, can you talk a little bit about what plans there are for adding parking spaces or designating parking spaces for folks that have placards, that have ADA access issues? I think in the preliminary plans, there were some opportunities to have ADA accessible parking actually designated, and I'm just wondering, is that going forward? What would need, what would be needed for that to go forward?
Councilmember Kiriakko, we are currently working on preliminary design for that, and we're planning to do that with a change order to Project Connect if we have the funding. But if we end up moving forward the Magnolia Crosswalks in our CIP, then we'll add it to that project because it makes sense for it to go inside, because that project will also add ADA curb ramps, which goes hand-in-hand with ADA parking spots.
Okay. And then a functionality question of the interim striping portion of Project Connect. When that was approved, it was approved with the understanding that the center median area that had previously been dedicated for a center turn lane through most of Old Town and is now a designated, kind of a median that has delineators and bumpers and things like that, a question has come up about delivery trucks, and that has historically been where delivery trucks were supposed to park when they're making their deliveries. I'm seeing some comments out in the public about deliveries that are happening elsewhere, and I'm just wondering, is the center median still where delivery trucks are supposed to park whenever possible, even if it means blocking a turn lane into a driveway or something, much like they used to?
Councilmember Kiriakko, that's correct. That's always been the practice, and it's still allowed with the new striping configuration. And according to our traffic engineer, the configuration is like probably one foot less within the median, so it's essentially the same amount of space.
Okay. One of the, I think, underappreciated portions of Project Connect is the roundabout and the bridge work, and anyone who's gone by and walked that stretch lately can see it really coming together nicely, and I really want to compliment the work of the team and how they're working with the contractors. And I know these projects are very complex. Can you talk a little bit about how things are going to work when we do the traffic switch, I think in May, and how will temporary roundabouts or other, other strategies or tactics be used to kind of help with traffic flow and preserving safety through there? What are, can you, you know, for Old Town residents or people that are going to visit, can you kind of like walk us through what it's going to be like a little?
Yeah, as we continue with the staged construction, the contractor will start building out those roundabouts slowly and methodically. And we are currently scheduled to go in May. However, based on utility conflicts and some design issues, it's looking that, like that may be pushed, but we will continually do outreach to the community to make them aware of what's happening with the project, and we do update the website weekly. But as those roundabouts start constructing and being put in place, we would do public outreach so the public is aware of how to use them. The pavement will be installed with the striping. You won't have the curb and gutter, but the configuration and the traffic will be using the roundabout. There won't be stop signs or any yields, there will be yield signs because that's in a roundabout, but there won't be any stop signs or signals. Those will go away, and the roundabouts will be used as a functioning roundabout like at Los Canaros.
Okay. I think I'll stop there and see if other folks have questions, and maybe I'll come back.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. First, some general questions in terms of the proposal to develop the parks tree maintenance program. Does that include both the parks and the open spaces? Or would that just be parks?
I'll let George Thompson respond.
Mayor and Councilmember Smith, we have a larger focus on our developed parks, and then within our open spaces where we have fixed assets or high-use areas. And a good example would be either a neighboring home that abuts an open space or an active trail system, or in the case of Elwood, where we have thousands of people coming every year to view our Monarch Butterfly, so the viewing area. We mentioned in the presentation that the million-dollar grant that the city received from the federal government via the US DA Forest Service, that million-dollar grant is on hold indefinitely, and under that grant, we were actually proposing to do a full inventory of our trees in our parks system, which we don't currently have, and that's really a key part of managing the urban forest, is knowing what you have and then setting up a maintenance system. the urban forest, is knowing what you have and then setting up a maintenance system. So in lieu of the grant, we are looking at opportunities to, to move that effort forward, just not at the scale and, and timeline that the grant would have afforded. Going back to our park tree system, we currently have about a dozen or so projects that we move forward annually on a much smaller scale, where we're going into our park system and pruning anywhere from one to, you know, a dozen trees. And so this past year, we've completed some fairly sizable projects, including at the South Coast Railroad Museum. Those are the, the scale of projects that we would continue to do in lieu of that million-dollar grant. Under the grant, we would do the inventory, we'd do a full risk assessment of every tree that is within fall distance of a fixed asset, like a playground or restroom, and then that million-dollar grant would have also paid for the first round of the highest-risk category of trees.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, that's helpful. Thank you. And, let's see, I understand the crib wall is going into, into final design, and it looks like from the estimates that we might have another winter or two before completion, is that correct?
Councilmember Smith, that is correct. We anticipate on having a, a final design by the end of this year, calendar year, and we would put it out to bid early next year.
So sort of until then, it's ongoing safety monitoring in terms of during, during the, the winter season and, and just sort of taking it day by day, is that correct?
Well, we did a, we did quite a few underground investigations with our geotechnical team, and, you know, based on that, they deemed it safe to, to remain open. We also didn't have a very wet season this year, it wasn't the, the high intensities that we've seen in the past. So at this point, we will continue to monitor, and definitely if we see changes, we will, we will close it. But right now, our team feels comfortable with where it's at.
Great, thank you. And then, going back to the list of, of CIP projects, can you remind me, I always sometimes get confused with sort of what falls into the project category versus maintenance category. So with, with the pavement, will the pavement project sort of continually be a, a CIP project, or is it a mix of CIP and, and maintenance budget?
Councilmember Smith, it's a, a maintenance project, but the reason we keep it in the CIP is because our CIP team does work on it, so we have staff hours doing the design oversight. So that's why it's kind of like married between CIP and maintenance.
Got it, okay, thank you for that. And then, going, looking in the staff report, between page 28 and 29, there's the, the list of the fiscal year '25, '26 projects, and then sort of the long-range projects, and they're, and they're list, they're listed. Do, does that, does the numbering have any significance?
Councilmember Smith, no, those are not prioritized in any specific order.
Great, thank you. And then, I was looking at, you know, and councilmembers may want further discussion on this, but I noticed that sort of two of the items that have come up in our previous discussions related to safety improvements along, in Western Galida, along Hollister, sort of between Stork and Pebble Beach Drive, one, and then also on Hollister in Old Town at Magnolia. So it's currently sort of listed on the to-be-determined, a long-range project. I'm wondering, you know, council may have some discussion on that, on those points, but I'm, I'm wondering, you know, regardless of what's decided tonight, in light of those safety concerns raised, are there, I'm wondering if there's ways to address some of the safety concerns raised in those discussions as part of maintenance? Whether it's, I don't know, lower, you know, sign, I'm trying to think of something that might be a lower-budget item, whether it's some minimal signage, or lighting, or other things that might be lower cost? Are there ways for that to be incorporated within routine maintenance in those areas?
Councilmember Smith, that's something that we can look at.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions for now, thank you.
Councilmember Reyes-Martin.
Thank you, some of my questions have been asked, but maybe to piggyback on a question that was just asked. So I understand on the tables in the report where you have listed projects if staff and budget is available, that those are not ranked. If staff or budget becomes available, how then are they prioritized? Does that come back to council, or is that an internal process? And the follow-up to that is how would council or the public then be kept updated on what projects are, we are able to do if there is budget and staff available?
Councilmember Reyes-Martin, I think we would put it through our project priority process, and then we'd bring it back to council, and we'd let you guys select which projects, you know, depending on availability of staff and funding that you guys would want us to move forward.
Great, thank you. That's really helpful, because I know that there's a lot of projects on some of the tables that we've, in the past, expressed a lot of excitement about, so it's good to hear what that process would be like, and then to be able to communicate that out to the public if there are questions. I did want to note, I know there was a question about the wildfire protection plan, I understand that would fall with a different department, but I do want to just highlight that I think there's been more and more interest in that, particularly in the last couple of weeks with the release of the new high-fire risk maps from the state. I know we have quite a few neighborhoods in Galida that are in high-fire risk areas, and I'd be interested to know, maybe this is a future agenda topic, but just what kind of impact that has on any number of things, or plans, or, or ordinances that we have? Does that change anything? And I think there's just a lot of questions from the public, so that might be something for us to follow up on. But I understand that that would be a, a work effort in a different department. And then just lastly, and there might be more questions later, but I do just want to highlight the amazing work that's happening in Environmental Services. I could talk about all of the different divisions, but I'll highlight that one. There's just a lot of excitement, I've heard so much positive feedback from residents about the programs related to Waste Free Galida, and learning more about the textile recovery program, and then seeing some of the other projects here for, for the next year or two. There's a lot of really innovative and forward-thinking projects happening that I just want to share is, has gotten, I've gotten very positive and exciting, excited feedback from residents about what we're doing in Galida, so thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to jump in, because I haven't had much opportunity yet. I, I guess I, I have a concern about the grant that Mr. Thompson said is on hold. Well, actually, you said that was on hold, and then there was the Santa Barbara Bike Path, 11 million was delayed. Is there a difference between on hold and delayed? And Mr. Thompson, I'm wondering if you could answer a question about, I know that we had a dinner recently with all the mayors and city managers here in Galida, we hosted it, and our guest speaker was Congressmember Salud Carbajal. And he was pretty clear in his conversation that when things are approved, but then they're put on hold or delayed, that he needs to know. So have we discussed this with him? Are we planning to? Just to keep, he, it sounded like he really wants to be kept in the loop about things that, from the federal level.
Madam Mayor, we can certainly follow up at his office about, about our, our urban forestry grant.
Okay, I think that'd be great, because he did say it several times.
Absolutely.
Okay, because that's, that's really unfortunate that that happened. I was really sad to see that. And then with the San Jose Bike Path that's on hold, is that the same as delayed? I mean, we were, you know, presented a check, I know you have to do the project, and then you get reimbursed, though.
Yes, so for, I'll just go back, the USDA grant, we actually were under the, we had an agreement with, and so that one was a lot further along in the stages. And so, so yes, that one's, that one is, is very frustrating. Our US Reconnecting Communities, we are not under agreement, so we were just notified of award, but we were not actually under an agreement yet, that takes the next stages of coming to a final agreement. So that was put on hold, and then our webinar was canceled to discuss what that looks like and how that process is underway, and who our project manager or coordinator would be with the federal government. They rescheduled that webinar, so it, it is rescheduled, so I think for that, we're going to learn more here by the end of the month. So yes, they are different, and maybe there's different terminology, but the USDA, we actually have an agreement, and we've been told it's at risk to spend money, and we would not get reimbursed right now. It's not to say that, I don't know if it's been confirmed that it's completely cut, but we don't, we don't have any information for when it would come back.
Okay, okay, thank you. That, that was my question on that, that. I, I do have a, a request, I, I don't know if we all received a letter from one of our constituents about the maps that were on the report, and there, could we in the, in the future list streets? I mean, they were kind of confusing to me, I was out this weekend kind of driving around and trying to identify all the streets. I think in the past, we've had a slide that showed the street locations, and I think that would be helpful to do that again.
Mayor Perotti's staff was directed to do that today, so I'm hoping it's updated today or tomorrow.
Okay, that, that'd be great.
And Madam Mayor, I'll just add that it's our intention, we did have a conversation earlier amongst staff today about that, and it is our intention to make some changes to how it's displayed on the website, including the comment you just made about having it in graphical, you know, a map form, but also just listed, you know, on a list, like by table, on a table. And also, we want to make that really easy for the public to see, it's a very hot topic, it's been well communicated to the council, to staff, that the condition of the streets is one of the highest priorities for, for community members right now. So it should be very easy for someone to go to our website and find the streets and answer their own questions, and we really want to make it so it's that easy to use, so that, so that we can direct people to the website. So our plan is to get that work done, I won't commit to next meeting, but either next meeting or the meeting after, we'll do a short demo here at the changes that we've made, and show how we're making it more prominent on the website, and that it'll be very kind of user-friendly for people to find out when a, a certain street is in the queue.
I appreciate that, that'd be great. Let's see, a lot of my questions have been asked. I, I guess one, another question I did have was about the mobility specialist, it's a new position, if you can give me some in, information about his role, or her role, I'm not sure who it is, a job description, do they only do mobility, is that with Vision Zero, or are they doing other things as well?
Mayor Perotti, we just hired for that position, and I think this person's been on board for about three months. So they're working on the ADA Transition Plan, and once we get our Vision Zero grant completed and established, they'll be taking over the Vision Zero Action Plan. So they'll be doing mobility items, bicycle, pedestrian master planning, sidewalk updates, curb ramps, things of that nature.
So that will be their role?
Yes.
And is that a full-time role?
It's a full-time, that's correct.
That's all I have right now. Mayor Protem Kasdan.
Yeah, thank you. So first, I had some on the CIP list, and I know we're not doing CIP now, but I was curious in the context of the NEXUS study, and like, take the, one of the items is the Stork Road Corridor, and presumably that would be something that the new, that the, DIF fees would pay for, right? I guess my question is, under what context would the future development impact fees consider and pay for a project like that? And is it when we come to do the CIP, should we be thinking, oh, we need to get this, these couple of projects done really early to make sure that the future development that comes pays for it?
Mayor Protem Kasdan, so the way I understand the DIF fees is that if a developer's coming in, they have to pay a certain amount into the DIF for whatever specific project that development will create, or we have on the books for. So we'll get a portion of that in DIF funds, and then we'd have to come up with our own portion to pay and construct that project.
Is there, we don't have to, you know, finish it now, but Mr. Meppe? Had described how the impurpose of the NEXUS study was to describe the set of projects that the DIF fees would help pay for, and that depending upon the needs that are out there, that, that's what DIF are applied to.
Pardon me, Mayor Protem Kasdan, can you ensure your microphone is turned on? Don't believe it is.
You're right.
Thank you.
Sorry, public. So I guess my question is, is that what, what is the, what do we want to have done in order to make sure that those are eligible, for instance, for DIF fees, or that we can get the maximum amount of allocation, you know, that we can allocate the DIF fees where it makes most sense? Is there, and, and this is CIP, so we don't have to cover it now, if there's something that you want to explore, or if I just don't understand it, well, whichever, but if it's something that is worth exploring, then let's explore it.
I'm having a hard time following, could you repeat the question, I'm sorry?
Well, and, and I'll just add, I mean, I think I understand it, I mean, you know, obviously a project has to be somewhat defined for a, a cost estimate to be applied to it, for it to be, you know, far enough along in our, in our consciousness for the consultant to then say, okay, I will take that project, that project's going to, you cost 10 million, I will fold that into my methodology and spit out the DIF fee. So to the extent a project is, is not well-defined yet, yeah, it's, it would, it would be hard for a consultant to then, they would turn to us and say, I can't include this because it's not well-defined. So in your example, yeah, that's part of the problem, we have a project in the CIP that's not funded and not defined yet to do safety improvements along Hollister, and just by example, you know, we've just briefly kind of said that maybe someday we'll need a traffic signal at Cannon Green and Hollister, for example. I mean, that's just been kind of talk in the hallways, for lack of a better word. We could, you know, that project is not well-enough defined, that the consultant will probably use that in the basis of their study. So at some point, you know, a line is drawn, and what's available for the consultant is what we provide them, and it generally would come out of the CIP. But if a CIP doesn't have a cost estimate, it's not well-defined yet, then the consultant really can't by definition use it in their calculation. I, I don't know if that gets to your question.
Well, I guess so. So in other words, the, when they're doing the NEXUS study, they're determining what projects are going to be eligible to receive DIF fees, and that essentially all of these projects won't be eligible, that if we wanted them to be eligible, we would either have to get them as part of the study now, or amend the study in the future, something like that. Is that right?
Well, we're working on the study right now, so... Well, we're working on the study right now, so because the county and the city have added so many more new housing units, we will have to develop projects that may be different than what we originally intended because the traffic circulation will just change because we have more cars in those areas. So the NEXUS study right now will help define these projects and we'll have cost estimates and we'll be able to decide how much of the DIF can fund this project.
Well, that's what I'm getting at. For instance, I see, and you know, it's not the topic for today, but I see, let's take Stork Road Corridor Study, Project 9102. Ideally, we would get DIF fees to pay for it. We obviously know if Glenn Annie comes in, for instance, it's going to have a major impact. They're going to have to pay. So we would ideally want to make sure, let's just take Glenn Annie, that, that that is going to pay for the Stork Road improvements. And so if there's something, when it comes to this list, if there's something that would benefit us of having it done sooner so that we could make sure we could claim the Glenn Annie money, I would, I would urge us to do that.
I agree with that statement and that's what we're going to be noodling around with the NEXUS study.
Okay, noodle. Two, two last points to, to Councilmember Smith's observation about, in this case, non-CIP-related items. One of the things that did strike me is along the Hollister, those bus routes, those bus stops between Pacific Oaks and like Jubilee or something like that, you have two bus stops there on the north side of the street with no street light. And, you know, just for somebody coming back at night, that's probably kind of dangerous if there's an opportunity to put in a street light to take a look at that. Having people, you know, get out at night and then have to run across that street isn't safe. And last but not least, we got a couple of comments on Pacific Oaks. And I was wondering, and I understand that's in 2026, that it's keyed up or queued up. The question I had, is there special, any special requirements for that? Because there's so many trucks that are likely loading and, you know, passing through there, does it change the nature of the project that you would be doing and put it on a different kind of?
Mayor Protem, it doesn't change the project. What happens is when we're developing these structural sections for pavement, we look at the soil conditions that are existing and they're rated between zero and 100. And the lower it is, the more loosey, like clayey and loosey the soil is. So then you have to do a bigger structural section because you don't have that hard soil underneath. Pacific Oaks happens to be one of those sections where the soil is not so great. So that needs a bigger section, so that, that is recommended to do a full-depth reclamation and that will take care of all the vehicle traffic, heavy trucks. So it will be built to accommodate that.
Because it, I would assume, I mean, you have Costco there, you have Home Depot there, you have Albertsons, you know, there's a lot of trucks that probably pass through that.
That's correct.
Okay, but that'll cover it. All right, thank you very much.
I just want to jump in real quick. I know Councilmember Karyaco has a question to follow on Pacific Oaks. I have a feeling that what you just said, it's going to have a hefty price tag on it. Is there any way we can do anything in the interim to, I don't know, to make it fill in some of the cracks? I don't know, I'm not an engineer. I'm just wondering, hold it off until possibly 2026 when there will be funding for it possibly?
Mayor Perotti, we're actually looking at internally on a level that we can just get it over the next year because right now the cold patching just keeps popping out. So I'm going to work with staff and we're going to try to do, they call it a skin patch. It's basically a Band-Aid on top just to bridge that gap for a year. So we will be looking into that.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Karyaco?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to follow up on the kind of the earlier discussion about the San Jose Creek Bike Path and the money and the big check and all that. So functionally, the city has taken steps, sorry, I'm setting up the question. The city has taken steps to ensure that resources are available to complete the project absent the grant coming through, as I understand it. And the grant is really based as a reimbursement for expenses as were in construction. Am I correct so far? Okay. So, you know, my understanding of how a bill becomes a law is at a certain point, Congress, you know, figures something out and passes a law, a president signs it, and then the money has essentially been appropriated. How the grant agreement works and, you know, how the paperwork is filed and what department it has to go to, setting all that aside, my understanding is the money's been appropriated, right? So even if we don't have an agreement, we have a lawful understanding that the money is supposed to come to us. Am I basically on the right track there?
You're, you're correct. The bipartisan infrastructure law that was signed in, I think it was August of 2021, was what Congressman Carball was talking about at that dinner and the actual appropriation of that money signed into law. And so his frustration from what he relayed to those in the audience was using delay tactics for something that was actually authorized, passed, and, you know, so it's kind of moving things around, but ultimately, to your point, those are lawfully appropriated monies. And so there's nothing that I'm aware of that precludes an administration from essentially wiping those out. They could slow play it, but.
So then this is going to become an Isaac question. So then if we get to the point where we're in construction and we should be starting to receive our appropriated reimbursements, do we have options if the reimbursements don't come to us?
Well, to piggyback off what our Assistant City Manager mentioned about what we heard from our congressman, I think there are steps certainly associated with allocated funding and a local agency's rights regarding that. And I would also venture to guess if that were the case, we would not be the only agency regionally or statewide that would be going through a similar push and likely in consultation with the state.
Okay, thank you. So then my next question is estimated completion 2027. Early 2027, late 2027, middle 2027? Do we have an idea?
I think it's middle, middle 2027.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to hear from the public. They've probably been waiting a while.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no speaker slips for in-person public comment. However, if anyone wishes to speak on Zoom, please raise your hand and I will call upon you. And we have Robert Zaidah who wishes to speak and besides that, no other public comments.
Oh, only one?
Just one.
Wow, okay.
Okay, Mr. Zaidah, if you could please accept the prompts you're about to see on your screen and please remember to unmute yourself.
I guess we all missed our invite to whatever party everybody else went to. Just a few comments. As far as street trees and street lights, I know when they came by my neighborhood and trimmed up trees, one day they were on one end of the street and the next day or so, they were on the other end of the street. And it wasn't until after they had trimmed up the first half of the street that I noticed that the street light that was up inside the tree was still not shining down onto the street. So thankfully, when they got down to the other end, I said, hey, when you get to this tree here, can you at least trim up so the, the street light shines down? So something to consider passing on to who's ever trimming the trees is the, those street lights are there for safety and not to light up the tree at night. So if they can be managed a little bit better so they're shining down on the street, that would be fabulous. My other question is, if I look on the website, and I haven't recently, so this might have been updated, hopefully it is, and I look at the list of projects, the map of projects of what's being repaved in the near future, it only went out a few more years and not on a five-year outreach. It showed me more that what's been done in the past than what's going on in the near future. So I don't know if that can be worked on or if I, like I said, I haven't looked at it recently, but I know in the past, it's been like, okay, these are coming up and there's a few years beyond that, that should be on, on the schedule as far as I'm concerned. That's it for tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Reyes Martin?
Thank you. You know, I think that is a good question to maybe address, how, how we manage those pavement projects. I think it is a reasonable question for the public of, you know, is there a way for the city to show like a five-year plan and what, what the budget is, what, you know, so can you, can you speak to that?
Councilmember Reyes Martin, we are currently working on the next five-year plan. So we have kind of a partial for 2026, but as soon as we get that plan figured out, we will be posting it to the website.
Thank you. I think that would be great and I think it would be also really helpful for, for council to kind of know what we need to budget for the next five years in order to achieve that. And I know that the public, I think, will really appreciate that too. So thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
I just had a question about process. So after today, I know we will come back and look at the budget, the budget items. And so, so based on this work plan, would we, if it, if it were approved as proposed tonight, that we would, we would look at a budget that would include the, the fiscal year 25, 26 projects as is currently listed here in this plan? Is that correct?
Councilmember Smith, that's correct.
Okay. And so if it's, if it's listed and it says this is a long-range project to be looked at in the future, that would come in a future budget discussion in a future year?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And if I can just add to that comment, because I think it's a, a good question and it's one we have talked about before, about the budget process and kind of the, you know, the what comes, what comes first, the chicken or the egg? And I think, you know, we've, we've even talked about should the operational budget come to council first and then the capital budget or should the capital budget and then, and there's pluses and minuses, right? Because they feed each other. And to this question, here we are talking about, you know, kind of Public Works's work plan. And as an example, they mentioned tonight, you know, they have some ambitious plans for doing more street tree trimming. We'll see if that makes the recommended budget. So we do have that challenge and it all kinds of comes together. And we certainly are hearing certain priorities voiced from the council on some capital projects. A couple were voiced, some safety-related projects. And so we're taking those signals, but it is challenging because the operational budget is set to come April 15th and we have to make some assumptions to bring that recommended workshop to you on how much we're going to recommend for certain capital projects. And then two weeks later, we come with the capital project and we don't want the council to be like, oh, how come Project X is not being funded? And, you know, so we're trying to kind of navigate that landing on the aircraft carrier a little bit. But that, I think Councilmember Smith's question kind of gets to that dilemma to some degree. And so we are doing our best to do that. We're hearing, we're hearing opinions and comments and we're all taking notes and we'll try to bring something back that's balanced. But the operational budget will come first and then, you know, you'll see the capital, the capital recommended budget later. And then you might say, oh, I might have made a different opinion about the operational budget if I knew, you know, so we'll try to do that the best we can.
Okay, thank you for that. I'd just like to say I appreciated Councilmember Reyes Martin discussing a presentation on fire risks, I think, moving forward, you know, that, I think that would be a really great idea. And also the question that came up about a street light that's shining up on the tree, we contract for our street lights maintenance, don't we?
Mayor Perotti, that's correct.
Yeah, so we can maybe have somebody take a look at that.
We can definitely do that and coordinate that.
All right. All right, so I don't see any more questions. It's looking like we're looking for a motion to adopt the annual work program for fiscal year 25, 26, Public Works Department. Who would like to make that motion?
I can make that motion. I move that we adopt the annual work program for fiscal year 2025, 26 for the Public Works Department.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Karyaco?
Aye.
Councilmember Reyes Martin?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Protempor Casdan?
Yes.
Mayor Perotti?
Aye. Oops. Oh, it's not showing on mine, so we're not doing that. Aye. Thank you. Okay, thank you. I just want to also thank this, all the staff and you have a huge department and huge responsibility and I really appreciate all the hard work. We all do. Thank you. Okay, we're down to council comments and standing committees. It looked like there was a Economic Development and Revitalization Standing Committee meeting. Does anybody want to give a report on that?
The committee met on, was it March, March 19th? We reviewed the city grant applications that were relevant to economic development.
All right. And it'll come back to us?
And, and we made recommendations and those will come to council at a future date.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none. Mr. Rosen, do you have anything you want to leave us with?
Have a good night, everyone.
In closing.
Yes. Hope everyone has a wonderful night.
All right, this meeting's adjourned. Not, not bad. Oops.